Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 23rd, 2017 meeting of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back, everyone. We had the privilege of not having to meet in July, and we're back here, ready to go to work. And we're going to start out by my asking trustee Wood to recite the mission statement to get us started.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We have a quorum. All of the trustees are present, and we have no guests who've signed up for special comment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, are there any comments, additions? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. Our next agenda item is for public comment, and as I indicated, there's no one signed up for public comment. And our celebrating success tonight is talking about the beautiful new Student Wellness and Recreation Center. Sarah Garcia was...
Sarah Bennett.
Ah, good. Jessica.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here tonight to celebrate the grand opening of our Student Wellness and Recreation Center. We did it. So, literally, most literally, the sun and the moon aligned, and all of our work paid off, and our... all of our work came up, paid off, and became a reality on Monday. So, it was very, very exciting. Fifteen years of persistence has really paid off, and I would like to thank everyone who helped bring this facility to our campus. ASNC and the students of NIC have been behind this project since day one. They've conducted feasibility studies, administered student surveys, and ultimately funded this project. This could not have happened without their drive, so a very special thank you to all of them. I would like to thank you all, the North Idaho College Board of Trustees, and the Dormitory Housing Commission for their approval and support of this new facility at North Idaho College. The SWRC project was an awesome collaborative effort. Students, staff, faculty, and administrators from all across campus brought together their expertise to ensure that this facility would meet the needs of our campus. ALSC were amazing partners in this project as well. Their team of talented architects and designers worked hard to understand the vision, our vision for the building. They listened to all of our stakeholders and ultimately produced a beautiful facility that aligns with our vision, and, in my opinion, exceeds expectation. I'd like to thank Geno Construction and all of their subcontractors for their hard work, their attention to detail, and a beautiful final product. So, there were a core group of three of us who spent countless hours in meetings, working together as an executive planning committee for this building. The final product is a testament to our hard work, so I'd like to thank Sarah Garcia and Heather Erickson for your collaboration and your efforts to make the SWRC happen. Finally, I'd like to thank Sarah Garcia specifically. As the project manager, Sarah did an awesome job keeping us on task, on budget, and on time. Between RFPs, the bond financing, the construction contracts, the equipment orders, and so much more, Sarah was a great leader, and I really appreciated working with her on this project and your commitment to this project. So, thank you so much. But now, the construction is done, and we're onto the fun stuff, in my opinion. The students are able to use this facility. So, for the nine days leading up to the grand opening, we conducted an intensive staff training for fifteen student employees. These students learned all about the programs within our campus rec department, so rec sports, outdoor pursuits, the challenge course, fitness programs, and are prepared to work in one or more of the positions that we have within our department. Near the end of our training, we hosted an open house for NIC employees to tour the facility and purchase memberships. This was a great opportunity for our staff to practice their skills and for us to work out some of the kinks before our grand opening. So, Dr. McLennan purchased his membership that day, and he was the very first non-student member of the SWRC, and I saw him on Monday working out in the SWRC. So, he's committed, so thank you so much for your support of the facility. All in all, the training went well, and the SWRC staff is ready to go. We had a really strong grand opening on Monday, and our operations are getting smoother every day. We will be open seven days a week during the hours that are listed in very small font, Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Fridays, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Our first few days have been a whirlwind. We've had over 700 members check into the facility. Over 450 of those were unique individuals, so that's really impressive for our first three days. It's been really fun to see our NIC students engage in a healthy way on our campus. We've had pickup games of basketball going on literally all day, every day, since we've been open. Students have been dropping in for open recreation, group fitness classes, PE classes, and so much more. I'd like to give you guys a glimpse into our new Student Wellness and Recreation Center, so I have some photos to show. This is our climbing and bouldering wall. The bouldering wall is going to be open during all of our operating hours, and the climbing wall will be open three to close during the week and four to close on weekends. It's been super popular so far. This is our weight room. It's also a very popular spot. Our cycling room, which is going to host our group fitness spinning classes, it's also open for students to just go in and utilize anytime they'd like. These are our fitness rooms. These are hosting our group fitness classes, so yoga, zumba, group strength, as well as many of our PE classes that take place in the facility. This is my favorite place, favorite space in the facility. This is our loft, and this is kind of our functional training space. It's really open. It also has the Queenex, which is a functional training system. It's really awesome. You need to come check it out. I have lots of pictures of that, actually, so a few more pictures to show of the Queenex. But, to be honest, the pictures really don't do it justice, so you guys need to come see it in person. So, I'd like to invite you to the ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house on September 7th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It will be at the Student Wellness and Rec Center. There'll be food and music and climbing wall fun, and it's going to be awesome. So, I'd love to see you there. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I just want to... what's the membership cost? You said...
So, for students, full-time students are automatic members. They're paying for it through their student fees. Part-time students are able to opt in. They're paying prorated student fees, so they're able to opt in by paying that full student fee.
Which is?
Eighty-seven dollars per semester. And then, employees, retirees, graduates of 2016 and forward, et cetera, are able to purchase memberships at a few different levels. Thirty dollars a month, 115 dollars per fall or spring semester, or 290 dollars for a 12-month contract.
You didn't say anything about board members?
We do have a community option, which is the climbing wall membership. So, if you're interested in climbing, thirty dollars a month, Thursdays through Sundays, you can come and climb on our wall.
Any other comments? I do have a... maybe it's a question. We just got out of a meeting that we called a SWOT meeting, S-W-O-T. I'm just terrible with acronyms, and now we've got SWRC. You don't call that Swerk or anything, do you?
No, I'm really trying to... people have been calling it that, and I... the rec center, let's go with that over Swerk.
Good. I just want to make...
That's my opinion.
Want to make sure and get it right here.
Yes, right. SWRC.
SWRC. But I want to congratulate, quite frankly, the students. As you already referenced, it's been a long time coming, and I know there was a lot of frustration amongst some of the earlier students who have pushed for this, and consistently the student body has shown an interest in this, and it's nice to see that the excitement still is there and that the facility is such a great facility. So, my congratulations go to not only the students that are using it, but all those students that pressed for years and years for this facility to be built and then made sure that it got done.
Absolutely.
So, a lot of congratulations. Go to your predecessors. Go ahead.
And I just... you thanked Sarah, and I think that's very appropriate. Sarah, through this project now, we can identify you as a project manager. So, Dr. McLennan, what's next for Sarah?
We have one or two things in mind.
No, great job. I can't even imagine the scope that went into all of this and all of your hard work, and so, this is wonderful. I can't wait for the open house.
Any other comments? Jessica, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. If I may, all these people were recognized, and I certainly want to recognize Jessica because we went through a process to hire a director. We had a number of external candidates with outstanding credentials, but we had the very best person that was already a part of our college here, so Jess was the one we selected. She's reaffirmed that choice through everything that she's done. She has lived and breathed this, believe me, for the last six months and has been so dedicated. She hired one other full-time staff member who just completed her master's degree, Angie Rios, who has joined her, and so we have an incredible staff between those two professional staff members and then eighteen-plus students who have been hired to run that place. So, we have a great staff there as well.
Awesome. Congratulations, Jessica. Congratulations.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is constituent reports. ASNC, Caleb?
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees, President's Cabinet, President McLennan, and guests here today. So, as you know, I'm Caleb. Sorry, it's... I'm a little new at this. Okay, I'll just get right to it. So, it's the first week. Everybody's been going a little crazy, I'm not going to lie. So, we had four of us come back from NACA, and I will show a presentation on that as well.
Make sure and speak up so we can get you in the speaker there, Caleb.
Sorry about that. Okay, so, NACA was a great experience for all of us, so we got to really experience student government from a different perspective. We got to engage with other student government and also leadership holding people. They weren't really student government. But anyways, so what we did was, we got to interact with them on our NACA retreat, pretty much, and it was a great experience for all of us because we got to experience student government and we got to see how other people ran the college and how they kind of interacted with students and how they engage with students. And I'll just show some quick slides. So, this is their vision, which I'm hoping you can all read, and they also have core values that I really liked, and I put in this slide because they actually have relation to what ASNC does, such as stewardship and communication, respect, learning, inclusivity... yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. And it's been really good because we got to experience all of this at the college and also put it in use and hopefully take it back with us to NIC so we can bring it back to the college and hopefully engage students with that as well. Here is a quick picture of the campus. Now, it didn't actually look like this. It was a little cloudy the whole time, but it was still a very nice campus, and it was well worth it and a long walk, too. It was a very big campus. I think it was 125 acres, so there was some walking included, so it was a good workout as well. Here is the whole group. There was 93 people from over twenty colleges around, and so we really got to experience diversity and also just meet people from different areas around the nation, and it was a good way to really interact with one another and kind of learn and grow and experience together. And so, at the conference, we had just four things going on. We had case studies. I'll just start from the bottom, sorry, I'm a little bit different. We had case studies, and so we kind of broke out in groups relating to our advisors, who we each had, and so we kind of got to experience, like, if something happened on campus, what would we do, pretty much? And it was a good way to grow and experience as well. We also had roundtables, which we were separated by rank, so I'm the president and I was with other presidents from the college. And I really enjoyed that portion the most because I got to see what our fears were and also what we were looking forward to in the ASNC... I mean, not ASNC, but like, our years in student government. And it was good to see that I wasn't alone in what I was doing because sometimes I feel like I have no idea what I'm doing, and other days seemed perfectly fine. And then, we also had caucus groups, which we also had our own personal advisors who personally chose us to meet with them, and that was great because my advisor was more discussion-based, which I love. I love just talking instead of learning and sitting and being taught, and so it was pretty nice to get hands-on experience. And then, we had educational groups, and a lot of mine were leadership-based, so learning how to plan activities and execute them properly was a big one for me, and budgeting and accounting and kind of keeping track of finances was another big one that I went to because I'm not really used to that and I have a large portion to keep track of. And then, outcomes. So, I gave a little presentation to the ASNC group, and I also wanted our three other senators who went to kind of briefly describe what they learned and how they can apply it. And so, we did that really quick, and it was really good to bring it back to the whole team because we took things out of the conference that everybody can use, and it was really nice to see because I'm hoping we can use it for this upcoming year and really apply it to what we do throughout our days and also just kind of build ourselves up in the process. And that's the end of that. And I'll just close that really quick. And we had a few other things going on. ASNC was asked to assist in the orientations, which were very successful and very hot outside when we took the two-hour walks, but it was very nice. We got to engage with the students, and I was asked to present at each one, and it was actually very good because a lot of students came up afterwards and asked me questions because I'm a student, so they related a bit more than talking to their advisors. And it was really nice to connect with students, and I got to meet a lot of them personally, and they've even come up to my office a few times, which I've asked them to do because it gets lonely up there. So, it's nice to see new students get engaged. The vice president and I also bought swag and were hoping to keep it up for two years. I brought some, too, if anybody wanted some. We got little wristbands that have ASNC on them, and also, I just like these because they're blue, first of all, and they changed color to purple, so if anybody wants those as well. I mean, I don't know what chemicals are in there, but it's pretty cool.
They kill you, but it was cool.
We also had a training week last week, and it was great to get one-on-one time with the new team. Unfortunately, we did have one senator drop due to personal reasons, so we're hiring for that, and I'll keep you updated at the next Board of Trustees. Let's see. We had our Day of Welcome yesterday as well, and that was very successful. We gave away over 500 t-shirts, and I think we had 750, and so it was very nice, and now we're going to give some to the CTE Building for their Day of Welcome barbecue, pretty much. And so, that will be good to go, too, because then I'll get to connect with them, and I don't go out there often enough to meet with them. So, that will be nice as well, and we also gave them ASNC swag to kind of reconnect and hoping that they'll get involved with volunteer opportunities, clubs, and things on the main campus. Other than that, not much. As you saw walking in, you saw, like, photos on the wall, and there's a big brown strip. That's new. That was the presidential wall, and it's almost completed. The senator who dropped was working on it, so we'll get it completed soon. That's all I have for today. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Caleb?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caleb, how long were you at the conference?
The NACA conference was only three days, so it wasn't too bad.
That's great. What I just loved your presentation, but I think the part I really liked the most was the accountability piece where you all came back and met with your group.
Yes.
And you demonstrated what you learned.
Yeah, I'm big into learning outcomes, so it was nice to kind of see what they got out of it, and then I got to keep track of that, pretty much, and then also kind of help them elaborate of what they learned and hoping they could share it with others. It was nice to see because it was well-received by the whole group, that we didn't just go spending student monies. We have just got something else.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Caleb. Thank you, Chair. When you go ahead and fill that vacancy, would you do us the honor of giving us an updated list of who the ASNC officers are?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll do that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Just a question on how does that conference and your attendance get funded?
By student fees, and so we use student fees to pay for the flight and also the registration and kind of anything, and also per diem, but it wasn't much. I think it was thirty dollars.
Sorry?
Thirty dollars for the per diem? Yeah.
Any other comments? Caleb, thank you. It was a nice report. Welcome back. You've been here for a long time anyway, haven't you?
I have, yeah. I've been here working in advising, so I've been helping students anyway, so that's really nice, too, to connect with them there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next constituent report is Staff Assembly. Susie Dean?
It is an honor to be here to represent Staff Assembly, and frankly, at the moment, it's slightly terrifying. As you can imagine, Teresa Henderson leaves some really big shoes to fill, so can only hope to follow her example. As you're aware, Staff Assembly doesn't meet formally during the summer, but we do have our Staff Assembly picnic, and this year we did something a little different. As the executive committee met and began to discuss and plan for the picnic, it was brought up that the dining services staff always works the picnic, and we're not able to actually enjoy the picnic. So, with Eddie Nelson's blessing this year, we brought food in from outside, and they were able to attend the picnic as guests, and we all felt really good about that. So, other than that, we will be meeting, the executive committee will meet in a couple of weeks to plan for our September meeting and see where we want to go with the year. So, brief update.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Judy?
You don't look terrified.
Good job.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Our next report is Faculty Assembly. Jeff Carr?
Thank you, Chair Howard, trustees, members of President's Cabinet, and everyone else that's looking forward to the adventure that is education this first week of class. Here's my report. The Faculty Assembly passed a resolution during its first meeting of the year that reaffirms this institution's policies, missions, value, and vision. The genesis of the year, our resolution was inspired by a public statement made by the chancellor of Spokane Community College, and it was concerning the recent protests at Charlottesville, Virginia, though we don't really need to look to the other side of the coast to find instances of hate speech or racist ideology. Our NIC's own Evelyn Meltingtallow this summer was riding her bike along the Centennial Trail, and someone confronted her and verbally assaulted her based on the color of her skin, and it's disappointing that we sort of live in a world where a wonderful, hard-working, passionate person like that would face such unpervered hatred. Our resolution reads as follows. "In the aftermath of the events at the University of Virginia, the Faculty Assembly of North Idaho College renews its commitment to respect the equality of all persons, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity. We reject the ideologies of white supremacists, the KKK, neo-Nazis, and other hate groups and renew our commitment to promoting human rights, unity, and diversity on our campuses. We respectfully request the administration and the Board of Trustees make a similar statement." Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you. Wonderful statement. I'm so proud of faculty and staff for doing that resolution, and I'll follow through with my board. I'm sure they all will, too, and see if we can join you. I missed the name of...
Evelyn Meltingtallow.
Okay. Well, do you think I could get a copy of your resolution? I would like to take it back to...
I had forwarded it already. I'll gladly forward it again. I think I had forwarded it on earlier, but...
In your email? I'm behind on email.
Okay.
I will... rather than, I will look, but thank you. Well done.
I can't take all credit for it, but...
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. No, thank you, Brett. Our next report is the Senate. Lisa Kellerman.
Good evening, Chair Howard, trustees, President McLennan, and guests. The Senate does not hold meetings, regular meetings, in the summer because our constituent groups, two of them faculty and then students, aren't necessarily here in the summer, so we didn't have an official meeting to report on, but we weren't completely off-duty. As you remember, at the June meeting, Grayden Stanley asked you to approve a name change for the bookstore, and he approached me to communicate sort of unofficially with the Senate members that we know, so just faculty and just staff senators. Our student senators have been chosen yet for the year. So, we did communicate informally by email to approve that change, but I am happy to say that tomorrow we have our first meeting of the year, and we will hold a formal vote and approve that name change, just so it is on record that the Senate did approve that for you. I want to thank you for welcoming me as the new Senate Chair, and I look forward to serving the campus community this year. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
And I'm not sure it's directly here to you, Lisa, but in the minutes reminded me about the name change to the bookstore, also discussion about then using a tribal name, a Carolanian name. Where are we with that process? I don't know where that goes. Lisa, you want to send that on?
Grayden, feel free to take that one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a committee that's currently working on that. We started last spring talking about it. I received correspondence from some of the tribal representatives today, so through this fall and early into the spring, and as a celebration of our 20-year anniversary of the Nine Point Agreement, we'll be catching up with all of those name changes for all of our facilities.
Good. Thank you. Well done, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is the Presidency Report. President McLennan.
Thank you. So, we're off to a great start for a fall. I thought I might quote Caleb and say, I'm not going to lie, things are a little crazy, but they're going well. I just want to express my appreciation for all the staff and faculty who, for a long time, helped build this fall's enrollment. I'm going to ask Grayden here in just a little bit to do a report on where we are with enrollment. We're down a little bit, but we'll talk about that in a minute. But, you know, I'm so impressed with all the activity and work and alignment of the... just the quality of care that goes into serving every one of our students as they come into our institution, and it's admirable, and I just want to make sure that everybody who's involved in that knows that they have both my appreciation and that of the entire cabinet. We got off to start with, I thought, one of the best convocation activities I've been a part of in many years. I want to thank trustee Howard for helping setting the stage that Tuesday morning, and trustee Murray for participating in one of the table groups to help with our planning launch, and it began with the beginning of a visioning process. Some of you have already been involved. I know the trustees were involved with Cabinet this evening with the SWOT activity, and I want to thank you all for participating in that, but we are underway, and I'm very optimistic, excited about the journey that we're on to help us create our future. So, obviously, more to follow. That will become a regular feature of our board meetings and my reports to you as the planning process unfolds. While we were downstairs this evening, I pointed out to a few board members, and I say this to everybody here who's with us this evening, you might have noticed a new wall along the far edge of the room down there, our new Veterans Center. It's a really nice space, and we were able to do that because of the... in large part because we moved some staff, relocated staff over to the new Wellness Center, and it created an opportunity to ask for meet... to meet... better meet the needs of our veteran students. In September, and I don't have a date yet, but we will be holding a public ribbon-cutting activity. You'll all be invited for that. I think we're going to try to organize that so that it happens in conjunction with the September board meeting timeframe, at least that day, and it'd be great if you could participate. So, really, very pleased with that. Trustee Howard and I attended with the other community college presidents and a number of trustees from across the state with the Community College of Eastern Idaho trustees, the newly-formed Community College, to discuss lessons learned, and it was a full-day meeting, and I'll let trustee Howard talk a little bit more about that, but I found it very productive. I do believe their trustees found it productive, but like any of those activities, usually end up... the people trying to do the teaching end up doing a lot of learning along the way as well, and I think all of us did exactly that. Governor's Task Force is starting to wind down. I wish I had something concrete to report to you. What I can say is that everything is still in flux. The four subcommittees are still working on recommendations. Probably the most interesting and impactful will be the outcomes-based funding, and there is no agreement yet on where that direction is going to go. That group is meeting on Friday. The final meeting of the Governor's Task Force is on September 15th, where voting will The final meeting of the Governor's Task Force is on September 15th, where voting will happen. And as I know more, I will certainly inform the board and the rest of the college. Grayden, you want to just tell us a little bit about enrollment?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President McLennan, thank you for this opportunity to give you a quick update. I would note that our official count, you know, is October 15th for fall semester, so the October board meeting will be coming with much more detail. I would also note to you that we continue with add and drop in some registration this week. As classes started on Monday, students can add and drop through this coming Sunday. And so, the numbers are still fluctuating. The one that'll change considerably is dual credit enrollment, because they're on a different calendar than us, so that number has been steadily rising for the last month or two and will rise quite dramatically as the other schools come back into session and students are enrolling in dual credit classes at their high school. To this date, we are 5.7% down overall in headcount, 5.7% down in FTE. We have made huge progress in the last six weeks through that. We were down considerably further than that, and I want to recognize, as President McLennan did, all the efforts that everybody's been making, beginning last spring with fall semester registration, but particularly in the last couple of weeks. We asked folks to work extended hours here. A week ago Saturday, we were open 10 to 5 and had all the offices open here on campus, had a remarkable number of students, surprised all of us. We were calling in people to serve the numbers who showed up. We worked through 6 o'clock in the evening all of last week and all of this week, every day of the week. We also worked last, this past Saturday, 10 to 5, and then Sunday, 12 to 5. And in all cases, we were rewarded with a large number of students and families who came in and accessed our services during that period of time. But huge thanks to our staff who extended themselves to provide services in addition to being open all of our regular hours, so I'm really grateful to that, and it had quite an impact. We were registering about 60 students every day through that process, including on each Saturday and Sunday. So, typical of our students, oftentimes, they're not well-prepared for the beginning of a semester, so we want to make sure that we're ready for them and help them get into classes. So, that's where we're at now, 5.7% down overall, 5.7% down in, in FTE. And the one that's climbing dramatically and will certainly impact those overall numbers is dual credit, that right now is up about 12% FTE, and we'll see that continue to go into our final reporting period.
Just to follow up on that, so the final report comes in October, that's our October board meeting. Good, thank you, because I think we've talked before, the only way now with the revenue we have is for increasing enrollment to help cut down the cost of providing the services that we're doing. So, hang on to those, the slippage.
Any other questions or comments? I do have a question, if you don't mind. With regard to the enrollment, can you help me understand where the enrollment decline is in terms of CTE or academic?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I can give you those numbers preliminarily. If we break that overall enrollment down, dual credit right now in FTE is up 11.47%. Academic transfer FTE is down 5.84. CTE is down 14.58. Knowing that CTE is about a third of the population, academic is about two-thirds of the population, that kind of gives you a sense where some of those numbers are at.
Mr. Chair, to follow on your question, is there a specific area of CTE programs you're seeing?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there are a number of programs, like some of our trade and industry programs, some of them at the Parker Center are down, but some of them also in the business, and then even in the health sciences are down as well, so it kind of crosses over all of those areas. As we get into this in October, I'll be real specific and provide for you all those different programs and what the, what the counts are. We would attribute much of this, again, to, as you know, when you have about 2.5% unemployment rate, as students have so many opportunities to go to work, that the idea of coming to school, taking out a loan, spending their time in classes during the day is not real desirable when they can find employment. Other institutions are experiencing similar kind of numbers as a result of that.
I want to follow up on your comments about the telephone encouragement. Can you describe, whether it's an age group, or whether it's, who are you calling in? What kind of success did you have from, we've got a wide range of ages and experienced people that come here to NIC, and who were you having success with, and who did you call?
Mr. Chairman, everybody. Certainly, everybody that was in our pool. We had a group of about 800 students that were out there that had the opportunity to be enrolled in, so that's a population that we are working with. But we divided this into, we had students who were eligible to re-enroll as continuing students from last spring, and we targeted them, and we were calling, texting, and emailing them, working in conjunction with communications, marketing, and other entities on campus. We had those students who had just applied but not taken placement tests as another entity. Those students who had applied, taken placement tests, but not shown up to their advising appointment as another entity. We had students who had completed all those processes and still had just not registered. We had some students who had gone through our student planning software, where they develop a plan that says, "These are the classes," but the last thing they have to do is click a button that says, "Register," that actually makes it happen. We had a number of those students who thought they were enrolled but hadn't clicked to register, so we reached out to them directly to say, "Punch that button too and get them registered in classes." It was really all ages, all programs, across the board. I don't know that we could zero in on a particular population. We saw all kinds coming in and we had contact with all of those. There weren't any students who didn't receive some kind of contact to encourage them to enroll. I'd like to note that there was a specific effort made by the foundation and through the resources that they offered to us, too, to make sure that there wasn't ever the occasion that a student was choosing not to attend here because they couldn't afford it. That was critical, and we had meetings with foundation staff, with financial aid and other folks, and communicated across campus that we won't have it be the occasion of students not coming because they said they can't afford it, we have too many resources to make that happen, so we worked real hard to that end.
Quick question. So, that's all done. Have you had a chance to reconvene as the administrators and say, "What are the strategies we can put in place well ahead of the week before," whatever, to set ourselves up? Because it seems like a great reminder to a lot of those people to push the button and do that sort of thing, but the other part of that is, if they receive a phone call from an administrator, or whoever it is from NIC, you probably have a higher likelihood of enrolling that person because you're showing the interest at that time, so kind of twofold.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustees. We have a registration debriefing come up, we were just talking about that at President's Cabinet this week, and about two weeks down the road, we're going to be gathering up all these folks from across campus and reviewing what we've done the last six months toward this registration cycle. What was good, what worked well, what didn't work as well, so we can always update that. There's Enrollment Management Council and Enrollment Management emphasis that we're paying lots of attention to those processes, so we're just going to get better at it every time.
Let me, trustee Howard, add to that answer. Today, I invited a very large group, 21 individuals across campus community, to join in a strategic enrollment management committee that will be looking at the long-range planning of all the issues relevant to enrollment. And its, its focus is truly strategic and long-range and not two weeks before the semester begins. We really haven't had that process in place for some time. It's a, it's a very varied collection of people, some identified by their role in the institution, that you predict them to be there, but it's going to be a very major emphasis. We're going to launch this here in a couple of weeks, and I'll be reporting on that throughout the year. But it's a good question, thank you.
Judy?
Just to follow up on that, it's good to hear the theme about enrollment. It seems to me as a board, that's, needs to be our focus for you all to go get to do it, but we champion the, really, the city nuggets, the graduation rate, retention rate, and the go-on rate. And that, I know, leads us back into the high schools and I think junior highs to begin to have folks realize this is the way to go. And from my experience visiting with some of the task force at higher ed members, that will be something that our, I think our legislature will be looking at, and there's some more information that'll come along, I think that will help our board realize what we already realized, but that may become our primary focus over the next year. And I know, in our budgeting process, you helped us, President McLennan, identify a targeted person to become the enrollment czar is too strong a word, leader, to focus on that enrollment, because that's the only thing we can grow around here now. The budget's not going to change that much because the money's hard to come by and not popular to raise taxes. So, the way to get it is have the folks enroll, they'll add to the coffers, and we have the same cost to provide it. If we have more people buying it, we can do it more cost-effectively. So, that would be my champion concept for the day, bravo for what you're doing, and I look forward to that October report.
Grayden, I have another question, I guess, I don't know if, you may, won't answer it, maybe the President McLennan wants to chime in, but you both referred to the fact that, about these, this telephone effort, contacting people who had shown some kind of interest and trying to follow through on it. And it would seem that that would be a great opportunity to learn things, to learn not only from those who decided that they would sign up, but from those who decided they're not going to sign up now. And I'm wondering whether you're recording any of that information so that we can learn something and, and try and develop more, and I know that you're developing a program, as you just mentioned, but I'm wondering if you can help us, are you learning anything from those phone calls?
This is an educational institution, are you learning anything?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're noting all of that, we have a spreadsheet that's attached to all those students and it, we record everything on there, so we have that rationale as we go through, and a student says, "I'm attending University of Idaho," if that were the case, we note that. So, we haven't gone back through and analyzed it because we're not done, but we're tracking all the phone calls, all the contacts, and all the responses, so we'll be able to come back and say, for example, out of these 800, 100 didn't come because of this and they chose another institution, and 50 were because of this. We'll see themes and patterns and be able to utilize that to inform our efforts in the future. So, that's being closely tracked and monitored.
One of the reasons I asked about that, with the CTE down 14.5% or so, I mean, clearly, we all understand that when the economy gets better, education, people don't go back to school, they go to work. So, although the employers are asking us to better educate the workforce and to make sure that the workforce is ready for the future, they're taking all of our students right now and employing them. And I'm wondering if we can get a handle on how many of these people are not coming to school because they've got employment, so that maybe we can make some modifications to our employment schedules, or, excuse me, our teaching schedules to accommodate people who are in that kind of a situation.
Mr. Chairman, we're certainly learning a lot from that, and part of what we heard, Dr. Burns and I were just talking about, the CTE programs. What we hear a lot is those potential students who are employed during the day would like to access our programs, but we're not providing that same instruction in the evening or on the weekends. So, what might drive change is that kind of information, so that you see some of the traditional block kind of CTE training being lauded out in the evening, on the weekend, when students can access it while they're still maintaining full-time employment during the day. That's a good example of where this may lead.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
That concludes my report.
Our next agenda item is a K-Tech report from trustee Banducci.
Thank you. We just met on the 9th of August for the most recent board meeting. A few things I'll share. One is, she's not here, but I would like to acknowledge Cassie Silvas. She and I have been working together and she's been helping with the NIC presentations to the K-Tech Board, and she's been doing just a great job and just interfacing out there, and just have a tremendous relationship with that facility, and just a lot of, a lot of working together out there, a lot of synergy. It's very exciting. So, anyway, I'll say thank you to her for her effort. Some good news, I think, on the future for us. Right now, they're starting to get some, look at people that have gone on from K-Tech to the new Parker Center for this year, and they're encouraged by those preliminary numbers of what they're seeing. And K-Tech is full. They have a few seats here and there, but their enrollment is well over 400. So, that's very encouraging for the future as more of those students walk across the parking lot and into our building. And they're very excited, there's a couple more things that are being talked about in partnership and more things to come, but they have got that collision repair program going that they've helped co-op with paying for one of our instructors, but the students from K-Tech are being taught in the NIC facility by someone that's actually our instructor, but they're helping to fund that instructor. So, again, part of our joint venture together, everybody's excited and it looks successful. That class is not full yet, but I think that was because we just weren't able to advertise it and get it out there, but the numbers are encouraging and it was a good start. So, a lot of cooperation there. The board out there, as some may be aware, are the three superintendents and then three, two people from industry and then one member of NIC, me. One of the members, because of his change in, in his job and requirements and his position, Jim Tippett, had to resign recently, so at this last board meeting, we installed Tom Power from Sunshine Minting as a new board member. He comes with some enthusiasm and support, so it's nice to have Tom join us. And at that same board meeting, it was time to re-up for officers, and Jerry Keen, the superintendent from Post Falls, will continue as our chairman of the board, and Ron Nielsen will go forward as our vice chairman. And that's probably enough on K-Tech for tonight.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd, for several years, we've, we've talked about this great partnership and the opportunities, and it's great to see it all coming together. We've always asked for numbers, and I don't know if you're going to be able to get that. You talked about students transitioning into our new building. Love to have some numbers on that from the director out there whenever they become available. I understand it might be a little early for that, but that's something we've always wanted to know so we can anticipate our enrollment, and so...
I'll ask Colby for that. I should be able to get that at the next meeting, I would think. And you're right, this meeting was still a little premature since we hadn't started classes and they were still finishing enrollment, so we really didn't have a handle on it yet. But, but I'll ask him for those numbers. The thought process is, oh, maybe this is an optimistic view of the world, that we should have some decent numbers, that the anecdotal evidence indicates that there's a number of kids that have gone across the parking lot there. Some are suspecting that that number will be growing each year, if that makes sense. You know, they said, "This year's going to be good," but they think next year, the next year's, once that's kind of more institutionalized, it becomes more the norm and the habit and everybody's used to it, and we're thinking that way, and it's there, the time will, will benefit us. But again, you know, we'll see how that plays out.
You know, while it may be a little bit premature with regard to numbers for this year, it may not be premature for the numbers from last year, to see who from that class last year now is enrolled over in the NIC program. So, if we could get those kind of numbers, it just helps us understand how to make that transition as, as good as possible and capture as many students as possible.
I'd be, I'd be, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, and that's what I was thinking of, because one of the things that K-Tech has done is they've done a very good job, and maybe it's because, you know, the numbers aren't as high, but they really track their students, you know, like right now, they, and I may have mentioned this previous, but they're very proud right now, they consider their placement rate that they're advertised as 95 out of 96. So, in other words, there's one kid that I think he said, "Hey, I'm going to go live in my parents' basement." But other than that, you know, 95 of the 96, either, you know, they've got a job, they're in the military, they've gone on to college, you know, the couple, three things that they define as success, you know, and, and that's part of that tracking is, so I think they've got a preliminary handle on those numbers, but we can see who actually followed through and showed up and, you know, and if anybody else might have joined the crowd there. I'm sorry, sir.
You got a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I hope, in fact, that that, you know, the burgeoning enrollments do, in fact, lead to walking across the parking lot to, to the Parker Center. My, my concern, and we're seeing it, is that some preparation for career, when you, when you take that in consideration of the incredible labor pressure in North Idaho right now, it's irresistible to go, to not go to work. And so, you know, this goes back to my comments about our Strategic Enrollment Management Committee and Grayden's comments about, you know, the packaging of these courses and how we're delivering, you know, it's pretty likely that we're going to need to really rethink some of our assumptions about how we do this work, and maybe we need to chunk it up into smaller bites, do it quicker, and so, or do it more in collaboration and partnership with K-Tech. So, any, any number of responses, but that's exactly the kind of thing that the...
So any number of responses, but that's exactly the kind of thing that the Strategic Enrollment Management Group is going to be looking at because as unemployment, you know, being as low as it is right now, people are going to work.
So you're thinking about capturing the people that are working, go to work and go to school?
If that's an option. I mean, we've already begun experimenting with a two-year program, and in our current model, chunking that up into half of the educational experience over a four-year period of time, that's a long time, but it's, does allow people an opportunity to work in those occupations while getting their credentialing for that next step, you know, along the way. So I don't know what the final answer of this is going to be, but we do need to do something in terms of how we're thinking about this, because we have an incredible opportunity, obviously, with K-Tech and with their growing enrollments to do something about that.
Real quick, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Don't the majority of our students work? I mean, are they full-time school? I had to work, so I assume a lot of them are working, so that we must be doing something right, the model. But it seems like with some of those kind of jobs that are very labor-intensive, or maybe they have to be out of the area, that's where that creativity is going to come in, and how can we capture them? So that's exciting.
Couple just thoughts or comments. Wanted to respond to Kristia. I believe you can get the K-Tech numbers now from Cassie. It would be easier on NIC's side to just query the kids in the class and find out. I'd also think if there's a decline in our enrollment in CTE, we would have a higher number of high school kids than older-than-average kids taking classes. Just seems to me that those are the people who are going out and finding jobs, these youngsters are coming out or going across from K-Tech because they're not yet in debt and having, or family and that sort of thing. So I'd think we'd get, speculating here, and speculation's never helped me ever, but I'll do it anyway, I would think that there'd be more high school kids there. And then to Rick's point, I think that you need to start thinking about how we can offer programs quicker, outside the box, so to speak. I've seen schools run different phases, like a phase one, two, and three for a program, and a kid can enter or exit at any phase at any time, as long as the skills in first phase have been earned. They could leave and come back and come back to the second phase, and those could be three-week chunks or six-week or whatever, just depending on time and the skill development that's needed. So I think it's something to think about. That's it.
Any other comments or observations? Okay. Then we'll move on to the next agenda item. I would just tab one, the second reading, the revised acceptable use policy 3.08.01. Ken Ordyski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Member trustees, tonight I stand before you for the second reading of the revisioned policy 3.08.01 for acceptable use, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions or discussion with regard to the second reading? And if there are none, can I have a motion in the second reading?
So, Mr. Chair, since this is the second reading, I move that we approve the name change from rules of use and privacy to acceptable use and approve the new language of the policy which fully replaces the existing policy language.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead. Todd?
Well, yeah, just a couple of thoughts. I looked at both of these, and I thought it was interesting. And I know there's, at times, been a little bit of discussion about differences between policies and procedures and the appropriate level of engagement for the board and what authority we should be exercising or not. And I look at both of these, and I see what was a policy that was fairly, fairly thorough, I guess, I guess I'll use that word, is something that's very generic and removes essentially all oversight from the board, because they were both very specific and very particular, rather detailed. And I guess I wonder, once you cede that oversight, it's probably never to come back. And I guess I want to make sure I'm understanding the rationale as to why we have taken such a dramatic approach to both the 3.08.01 and 3.08.02, because as I look at them, I'm linking them together, even though I know we're only talking about the first one, but the end result is very similar in both instances, and the effect is the same. You know, I understand a broad base to allow for flexibility and such and give everybody some wiggle room so we're not constantly updating, but we went to basically, just don't do anything wrong, and here it is, and then we'll make changes at whatever level, and then we're good to go, you know.
So Todd, do you have a question that you want to ask him?
I guess I do. I mean, well, first I'm making a comment. So there's my comment. How's that? So how about now I make a question? I don't know that I'm satisfied with what I see, and I'm questioning the thought process behind it. So I'd like, my question is, is tell me why I need to go from what we had to what I'm now looking at.
Absolutely. Thank you, Trustee Banducci. The question in mind is taking out the very specific incidents or generic, or generalities of the line items that, for the acceptable use pieces and for the email of what thou shalt not do. The problem with technology these days is that it's changing so much that when you put it in a fine line for policy and someone goes just a little bit off of that, that you really open yourself up where they can actually get away with that. We see that in a lot of different things with data sharing, because if you, in broad, say that we have these general policies and guidelines that you need to follow, and if you specifically say that you cannot store your data on a flash drive and then remove it from this room, if somebody happens to take it out of your pocket, then you have to go by policy to that very specific piece that you had thus way. This allows us the flexibility to change as technology changes and not come to the board with a four-month change and a change in technology with our current process for approval of policy to make changes every single year or twice a year with different policies. A reference here is if you look at strikeout number six, we'll share resources such as disk space, internet bandwidth, printer queues, batch queues, login sessions, software licenses, et cetera. We haven't actually had any use for shared login sessions because that's old terminal technology. So if someone logged in at two points in time, so in essence, if my help desk worker remoted into the same login session that you are, you're in violation of policy, even though that's a support mechanism that we have. So when you get specific, there's all these other things that can come up that are either a breach of policy, a potential breach of policy, and it gets very unclear and muddy. Plus, if you look at the new standards for all the different technologies we do, we need to cover in here, this would become a very long policy, and it's really hard, and what we talked about in committee is, it's almost impossible to predict every single instance of a way that some person could breach the, breach an individual line item. So we're asking for is flexibility in that and then use guidelines and new standards on the other side to do the procedures and then have a set of guidelines that's overseen by another committee to actually use industry standards and guidelines that we can actually put out those kind of one, two, three items.
If I may, sir. Okay, as I noticed the two policies and the new procedures, the author has been updated to be the chief information officer, which is appropriate. And you did provide us the two procedures at the last board meeting, so I do have those to reference. Now, as I look at these, am I understanding you to say that these procedures will be under a regular review or revision semi-annually, annually, something like that, and that, that they capture enough? Because it looks to me, I guess, Ken, are you the, okay, I'm going to ask it this way, I don't mean to be rude, but are you the arbiter of interpreting the more broader languages to what's appropriate and what's not? I mean, or is there a committee doing that or something? Because as I look at these, as you get into these gray areas, or as you said, rather than specifically identifying these, being a more broad brush, how do we resolve that? Who determines if someone's, rent a foul of the language in these procedures?
So, sorry, Trustee Banducci, the procedure basically states that it starts with a verbal warning, because anybody could mess up or get on a bad website or something like that. And so then it becomes education with the user of what they did. And then it escalates to managers, to managers from there, from an information, from the chief information officer, hopefully never to the legal standpoint when we have to do something immediate that's a legal action. But from that point, we were very careful in the policies and procedures to refer them to the existing procedures for either student conduct or faculty-staff corrective action. So those would be taken care of through the regular procedures, or policies and procedures that the board has based on those infractions.
And who makes the determination of the, that the infraction incurred?
That would be the, the reporting manager and then the chief information officer reporting to president's cabinet or the administrator or manager of that individual. Much like an HR infraction would be, if there's a suspicion that something happened, it would be talking with HR and everything else. IT should never be the gateway, it should be just the investigator and then provide that, usually if it's a staff member to HR, and if it's a staff member to the VPSS, and then corrective action from that, just like we would do in any Title IX dispute or anything else. We wanted to use those exact same policies and procedures that were in place so that I'm not, to, it shouldn't be one person out there doing it, it should be the policies and procedures that the board has put in place and the institution uses, just like any other corrective action.
Okay.
So that interpretation would be that investigation element.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Very well.
Okay. We have a motion, excuse me, to approve the policy in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. Let's move right on to the next tab two, which is revised email usage policy 3.08.02. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very similar. This is the revision of policy 3.08.02 considering electronic mail. Stand for any questions.
We need a motion and--
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to accept policy 3.08.02 and approve the new language of the policy which fully replaces the existing policy language.
Is there a second?
No, I have seconds.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So those two policies are now revised and accepted by the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As you move on to new business, I'd like to make a motion under new business.
Make a motion in new business?
Yeah.
Do you want to do it before we go to tab three?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we put on the next agenda for discussion, a matching resolution that faculty has prepared. What I really liked about it was it's certainly not partisan as all in nature, it's really just a statement about support for dignity and respect for all human beings. And so I, I really like what they've done, and I'd like the board to have discussion and have it on the next agenda to mirror their resolution.
Yeah, just as a point of order, I, we don't need a motion on that. My policy is at least, anything goes on the agenda that any board member asks for. So if you have a motion, or if you want an agenda item, then present it to us and we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That was easy, wasn't it?
Yeah. You're holding hell.
Okay, our next agenda item is the new business, first reading compensation structure policy 3.02.16. And President McLennan?
Thank you. You've all received the background information in your board packets. One of the items not in there, and you might have seen it in the committee action, is sort of the route that this took was through College Senate, but it also then went through president's cabinet on its way to you. And the president's cabinet also agreed with College Senate on the developed, the way the policy developed as it's presented to you. This is being presented to you as a first reading. I'd like to introduce Erin Davis, is she still here? Oh, there she is. And Josh Gittle, the, these are the two co-chairs of the group that we tasked last fall to take a look at our, at our policy. Essentially, some of the old policy is reinforced, but what's different is procedures are separated out and they are differentiated between faculty and staff, and you see that in the accompanying procedures. The procedures are not finalized, there's still just some very minor work that's going to be going back to the College Senate here in the next few days, but by and large, they're, what you see is what will happen. What this is not, and I just want to make sure, it's come up a couple times along the way, and it is not, one of the interests when we first started down this road was a compensation study, and as the board knows, we budgeted for this year's budget, the actual activity for the compensation study. So that, that work is yet undone, but will be being conducted throughout the year. There's also, well, I think I'll just stop there and just open it up for discussion. And I would invite you to ask me questions, if you have them to me, but also our two co-chairs are here and they're exceedingly willing to answer any questions and engage in the conversation with us as appropriate.
Judy?
Just clarification in the scene setting. We have before us a policy and then two procedures distinguishing a staff compensation structure from a faculty compensation structure.
That's correct.
And our motion, or our new business, is to read about the compensation structure policy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Todd, did you have a question? Comment?
Both, actually. One of my concerns, and I was hoping to see it integrated into the process, and if it is, I've missed it. I had hoped that we would have an ability to have some differential compensation for positions, whether they be in the STEM world, math, technology, science, electronics, whatever, slash CTE, that we could have a variable compensation schedule or differential compensation schedule if we were having a difficult time nursing to fill positions, some of these higher demand career fields that we are in direct competition with industry. And I don't see that provision or ability anywhere in this system or process. So if I missed it, please point it out to me.
So, Trustee Howard, if I can respond to that. Trustee Banducci, that was not conveyed in the charge to the group. As you recall, that more substantive discussion came up through the budget approval process this last spring with the idea that that is, that's a future conversation and one that we have not yet fully had or formerly had, but one that we may need to engage in. But it is not part of this recommendation.
I have one, a comment or a concern. If I'm reading this correctly, this formalizes the program that locks us in to an annual increase, which would reduce our ability as a board to adjust as needed on an annual basis, as we've been able to do in the past. There have been times where, for whatever fiscal reason, there may have been a raise, there may not have been a raise, the raise may have been 1% or it may have been 3%. If I'm reading this correctly, this ties our hands and does not give us that discretion or flexibility going forward. This codifies a guaranteed increase. It's almost like doing a triple net lease with a building where you've built in a 2.2% or 4.8% or whatever the percent is, rate increase every year in the, in the annual rent or lease. So I'm concerned by that. One of our tools to help balance the budget and for fiscal responsibility as fiduciaries is to have that flexibility on an annual basis to look at all lines of the budget and the various expenditures that this college has. So I'm reticent to tie our hands and lock us in to something that's set in stone like that, that reduces, and actually eliminates that flexibility for that particular line item.
Any other comments or? I have, quite frankly, some difficulties with this policy. I would hope that the goal here at North Idaho College is that we are, we be competitive with regard to compensating our faculty and our staff. I see nothing in this policy that references the concept of being competitive. And how do we determine that? There's nothing in the policy that would require some periodic research on compensation in the Northwest area to see if we're going to be, if we're being competitive or not. the Northwest area to see if we're going to be... if we're being competitive or not. My understanding when we first got into this step and column process was that it was an opportunity to catch up because we were so far behind. It was a time when we were really way behind and step and column was a methodology of getting us into a competitive status, which I think we are now. But I haven't... I think we had asked for a study this year. I don't know if it's still coming or not.
That's... Trustee Howard, that's the work I referenced earlier with the this year's budget. We have built in a certain amount of funding to conduct a compensation study.
What I would like to see is part of the policy that we do that on a periodic basis in order to assess whether or not we're staying competitive. Because there have been times in the past when we have had revenue issues. We haven't had enough money to pay... make the step increases and everybody's expecting it. It creates disappointment when we can't do that. There are expectations created by the step and column method that as they move through these different categories and everybody moves... takes a step every year. And if you don't take a step, then there is a... According to the procedure that I see, a 2.5% increase even if you don't take a step. So there are automatics movements in salary without reference really to competitiveness. And so I, quite frankly, when this comes around, I'm probably going to be proposing some modifications to the policy that at least require some kind of review of competitiveness on a periodic basis and that the Board have the final say with regard to salary increases, even if achieved through step and column changes. Because I don't want to create expectations here that create disappointment when we can't do it. And I want to, quite frankly, be able to make sure through our... doing our homework, that we maintain a competitive atmosphere here at North Idaho College. And I, quite frankly, don't see any of that referenced in this policy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could comment. Some of your statements are... The way that you remember the step and column, that's very true, that we did revise all of that right before you came on the Board or while you were here.
It's my first call.
Maybe it was your first year, yeah. But I just want to be clear that this institution has had step and column going back for over 50 years. And because when people come up or hired at the institution, there has to be a way to put them into a fair salary structure. And so that's done through HR and it's done with, as they've listed out here, with your education, your teaching experience, or if you're staff, whatever your work experience is. So that's normal across the nation and all colleges. And you need that kind of a tool, frankly, to assess and put people on the correct salary schedule. And then as far as every year moving down the schedule, that is a strong recruitment retention tool. You can look, you know, 10 years down the road. If you stay with NIC, you should have a pretty good idea where you're going to be. And most, almost all institutions honor that because they want to retain their faculty and staff. Now, in times of extreme hardship, there are decisions that are made and we've lived through some of that. I frankly think that there should be, I guess, a little more exigent circumstances financially for us to forego a step or column increase. And I don't think it should be just, well, we've just decided not to do it this year because we're going to invest our dollars elsewhere. I think that faculty and staff and our employees are the reason we're all here is to support our students. And we certainly couldn't do it without faculty and staff. And so I like what they've done. I think they've done a very thorough job. However, I would agree with you that it would be nice to have maybe built in that comprehensive review every few years. We should see where we're at in the market. And because there's going to be times where if we're ahead of the market, we need to adjust it. If we're below the market, we need to adjust it. Hopefully, we're going to be just right in the middle at least. But there's nothing wrong with being at the top of the market either. If you are delivering the best programs, if you are working the hardest in the state of Idaho, there's no reason not to be at the top. I think we would be happy to say we're at the top. So I like what they've done, but I would agree with you that we could build in the review.
Todd?
I want to say this tactfully. For anybody that's been an employer, not everybody has or made payroll, and Judy may or not want to nod in concurrence with what I'm going to say, but I would suggest that very few, if any, of her employees have a set schedule where they're guaranteed a raise every year and they're guaranteed because they've been there for a certain time or whatever. They're paid as they're deemed what they're worth, what their value is to the corporation and they're given raises. Now, maybe periodic evaluations, things done, certain milestones in a career, maybe probationary period initially, things like that. But in private industry and in a right-to-work state like we live in, there's very few, if any, in the private sector have that sort of thing that I'm aware of, you know. So...
I would comment to that if I may.
Are you...
Well, okay, I'll be done, but I don't see it as a necessary thing to stay competitive. And I think, like business owners, the five trustees should have the discretion of compensation for their employees. Go ahead.
I would just say that we're not in the private sector. Educators have come to an expectation of a salary schedule. They know how it works. We frankly don't have to compare too often because there'll be... People will know, having worked with salary schedules long enough, that you look at your neighbors all the time. And if you're trying to recruit from your neighbor's backyard, those people know what you're paying. I think it's a... it would be really difficult to do away with a salary schedule and try to keep your folks...
Well, I didn't say do away with it.
Wait, wait. Just one at a time, please.
I would agree with one point you made that goes later. And I think having some type of salary differential at times would be helpful, especially in the CTE area when you're trying to find that hard to fill. So I'd agree with that, but good discussion, though.
Some people have been in education longer than others.
Do you have something else, Todd?
No, sir, I'm done.
I guess I want to make a comment to follow up on my earlier comment. If I left the impression that I want to do away with the step and column device, that wasn't my intent.
Okay, thank you.
What I want to do is I want breathing room in there to make adjustments as we see fit.
Yep.
I think to organize the structure of the college through the step and column method may be entirely appropriate, but it's whether or not the... there are automatic raises included in there without any provision for the trustees to make adjustments. You had indicated trustee Wood that you would like to see there must be at least exigent circumstances.
Correct.
Rather than some whim on the part of the Board. And that can be built into the policy.
Yeah.
I would agree that, you know, we don't want a whim. It's got to be... there's got to be a good reason for it. But right now, I don't see in the policy or the procedure that kind of flexibility. And I just want to see it in the policy. And the procedure's going to be developed by the college, but I want to see it in the policy so that we don't create expectations. We get into a year where we have difficulties with finances and we have to do something with regard to the automatic raises that are built in. And in the past, we've been criticized, and rightly so, that we didn't follow the procedure. And I'm just... I want the flexibility built into the policy that allows us, when circumstances require it, to make those changes. And I would like to see built into the policy, as indicated, some kind of measure that we can continually evaluate where we are in terms of our competitive position. Mr. Chair? Hang on just a minute.
Thank you for that clarification. You know, it's interesting. The proposal here, I think there's... it's actually very responsible, coming from a different organization where, you know, we had collective bargaining, binding arbitration. And when we were maxed out on our salary structure and scale, you could always count on the COLA going into the base. And NIC has been very responsible. If you look at the very end of the policy or maybe procedure, the people that are maxed out, there's no COLA going into the base and building that base. It's a one-time stipend. And so I thought that was very interesting, very responsible. I don't disagree that there are going to be times when there could be financial constraints, but I do think you need to be very careful about how we proceed in that way. Because if you are going to recruit and retain employees, there has to be a sense of security that I'm going to stick with this institution because I know if I do everything I'm supposed to do, get my education, get my time in the classroom, continue on with my credits, this is where I will be. So I'm going to stay with NIC. You will find all the other sister institutions doing exactly that. And so I don't think we can go too far out of the norms or you're really going to directly impact the quality of staff and employees. And that impacts the classroom.
Todd? Oh, I was just going to thank you for the clarification because if anybody was listening to what I said, I didn't say to do away with that. I said to leave us the flexibility and not codify that it was an automatic increase without our having an input and the ability to adjust that and be flexible. You know, again, as fiduciaries, we might need that. And the idea of exigent circumstances can sometimes be a relative thing and come to what your definition of exigent is. So we obviously need to be cautious there how we've... if we insert some language to that effect, how we articulate that. I just think that hopefully us five trustees together as a body have some modicum of wisdom selected by folks that we can spend the taxpayer money wisely and hopefully do a good job with the budget here and make those calls. That's why we're here.
Well, I mean, we have a statutory obligation to approve the budget. I mean, that's what the bottom line. And this is a big part of the budget. So it's worthwhile giving it good consideration. And unless there's some more comments, we can move on to the next item, but this is just a first reading.
We'll question then.
Yes.
So the second reading, does that come to the next Board meeting or what? We haven't heard from all of the people involved on... They all agreed to this and brought it forward and they spent how long on it?
Nine months, I guess, somewhere around there. Trustee Howard, if I could just offer a few comments. Yeah, I really appreciate this conversation. You know, from my perspective and from a competitive perspective, you know, we just launched this incredible visioning process of creating the future of North Idaho College. And as President of this institution, and I might be being a little bit selfish here, I want to nail our workforce to be the top, best in class, to accomplish the best possible version of our future self that we can. And so, you know, I'm always going to be pushing for us to do everything we can possibly do to be the most competitive. I want to steal every stellar employee in the higher education world and bring them to North Idaho College. How does our compensation policy allow us to do that? You've talked about the features of this, of the step, you know, the schedule and all that as being a predictable feature for people in the education world, the higher education world in particular. And then you have this competing sort of interest of how do you not have, in one broad stroke, say, we're going to do this always, but honoring the principle of a commitment to that. And really, in the end of all this, it's going to be expressed in our behavior, what we actually do in a given year facing the circumstances, whatever those might be. You know, I've talked and I'm going to invite both Erin and Josh to maybe weigh in, you know, on your thoughts about this because you certainly, you know, had the committee and really shepherded this through the discussion, college-wide discussion on this. I'm interested in what an answer from the Board might be and what that might look like if that was a goal. To give the flexibility, to honor the commitment to the principle, but to also give predictability to build the best world-class workforce we need to build to do the work we want to do.
Do you have some comments?
Sure. Chair Howard, trustees, President McLennan. So this obviously came up in the discussion with our committee. Josh and I were co-chairs. We had faculty, staff, and human resources represented on that committee. A lot of the discussion started with the faculty even a year beforehand. We were starting initial work with Dr. Burns on a faculty compensation policy at the time that then kind of got morphed into the work that we did last year on this committee. And so a lot of the discussion has been that predictability factor and the idea that the salary schedule you're given when you are hired nowhere has an asterisk on it, right? And that we are very aware that the Board has from time to time, for different reasons, not granted steps in certain years. I know I have anecdotal evidence of faculty maybe who were hired five years ago who came in and said, oh, wait a minute, this salary schedule doesn't happen every year. And, you know, they started looking around, right, at other places. And so that was very much the conversation. So we're very aware that the Board has the final say, but we wanted the salary schedule honored in the policy, if that makes sense. So, do you have anything to add to that?
Do you have anything to add, Josh?
You know, one thing that I also want to reiterate is as we went through this process as a committee, one of the things that we really tried to focus on is not the schedules themselves, but the process of moving along those schedules and then the reasons reaffirming why we have those schedules. And so I know a lot of these conversations do get kind of intermingled between, you know, the steps and columns of the actual schedules themselves. But as a committee, we really wanted to focus on, you know, how we move and why. And some of these things just really, we needed to document because we have these procedures that we've been operating under. And if you look at the original policy that's out there, there's so many things in that original policy that are very outdated. And there was a lot of cleanup involved with this whole entire process. And so we looked at a lot of different aspects of this whole entire process, but that was one of the primary focuses is not necessarily the schedules themselves because we know that there's this... the compensation study that is planned and that's probably going to trickle down to those schedules. But we wanted to reaffirm why we have them in the first place, which is kind of what the first part of this policy is focusing on is, you know, that reason to attract and, you know, retain, motivate, reward employees and to provide that way to show them, hey, five years down the road, if you're working here, this is kind of where you can expect to be. And so we had a lot of different discussions on this. And then we took these discussions to our different constituencies. So the faculty and staff and our groups both supported and reaffirmed all those things that we discussed.
If you don't mind, let me ask the two of you. There may be discussions here that people hear as us not wanting to encourage people to stay or not wanting to have, you know, the best possible place to work. I don't think any of that discussion's taken place here. I think the question gets to be, the Board has a statutory obligation to pass on the budget. And when things get tough and we don't have enough money to do everything, this policy and procedure locks us in, right, to giving everybody a raise every year. And that, to me, is an abandonment of my duty as a trustee in terms of making the decision about the money that we have and how do we spend it. That's the rub. It's not when things are going all right and we got the money, you know, the step and column is... I'm okay with that. It's when we have to make a decision. And I see the policy and the procedure that doesn't give us the flexibility to do what we might need to do. And I think it sets up some potential disappointment amongst faculty and staff about how come the Board is violating its own policy and violating the procedure. And so that's why, what I'm wrestling with. How do we find a way to give us the room to do our job when it needs to be done, but on the other hand, to allow the policy and the procedure to act smoothly in terms of people anticipating things so long as things are going well? Mr. Chair? In your discussions with your constituents, is there some difficulty with not permitting the trustees to have the final word?
So I think that there is an understanding in our committee and then I can also speak for faculty and faculty assembly, that the trustees do have the final word. And that we do have a salary schedule that at times the trustees have felt that they are not able, you know, to go with for that year. And so I don't think that there is any sense that the trustees don't have a final word and that the trustees, every year through the budget process, as part of that, don't approve, you know, what is recommended for the salary schedule. So I'm... Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess, and I'm not ignoring your question. Yeah, sorry. I'm just wondering if we can find some language that, you know, gives the trustees sort of the narrow pathway to exercise their responsibilities under the statute, but at the same time, allow for the kind of confidence that the faculty and staff feel that they need in terms of a process and a procedure. But that language would involve something more than what we have here because it'd have to spell out in the policy that the trustees, under some narrow circumstances or some circumstances, have the right to make those decisions. I do that because, again, I think, and rightly so, I think that if the faculty and staff look at us and say, "Here are policy and procedure, and you're not following it. You say we have the final word, but you read the policy and procedure and we don't. We've abdicated that. We've given it away." And so that's my concern, is making sure that we have an avenue to do that, leaving intact, hopefully, the confidence the faculty and staff have in their compensation progress. But so we may need to put some additional language in here, at least that would be my proposal, and maybe send it back to you folks to discuss and have further conversations. Todd?
Just a couple of things. For the record, I personally have some very dear friends that are on faculty and staff here, and it certainly would not be my intention to hurt my friends, you know. Several people I highly respect and some military friends that are on faculty, you know, guys like Carl George running the Veterans Center, you know, fellow academy grad. So I'm not here to, I don't want to hurt anybody. It's not my intention. I'm echoing Ken, it's about the fiscal responsibility we have and to allow for the flexibility. And I won't recite the last 10 or 12 years, and it's been up and down. There's been some years flat where there was nothing, but if I use the last four years, for example, we did a 4%, which I think was to try to help bump it up, and then we've done three and three the last couple of years. And one of the things that comes to mind to me as I think about that is that sometimes the state kind of leads us in that. And this last year, they threw some money out there. Sometimes it's CT side, other, but we always try to equalize across the board. So say we codify a 2.5% increase, and then the state and the governor says, "That's another year we're going to try to get more money for education, especially higher ed." And they propose another 3%. Okay, what do we do with that exactly? So sometimes just reconciling with the state, how they might be leading, either from the House and Senate side or from the governor's side because they each produce their own budgets, come together. But, you know, this last year, the governor's throwing money, and I think he's going to do it again this year for higher ed. I know we've got some requests in for money. So there's another possibility where that could cause us a bit of consternation is as we try to, if we're set in concrete, it might even cost you some money, possibly. Just some thoughts.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for coming up and helping us work through this a little bit. Yes.
I just want to, so just to clarify and maybe to help us with next steps, I jotted a note that there could be some work that would, for needed additional language to communicate the policy commitment, a policy commitment toward the principle, but to frame or guide a decision pathway for alternative consideration under certain circumstances. Is that?
Something like that. I guess my suggestion on the policy, on the procedure from here is that we put it on the agenda for a second reading next meeting. I can tell you that I will probably, if somebody else does, and I'll probably propose some language in line with my comments here. If it doesn't pass, if my amendment doesn't pass, then we go on.
Go with mine.
Yeah, right. So it really depends on what happens at the second reading as to whether we adopt the policy that's presented or whether we adopt an amendment to it. If we adopt an amendment to it, then my suggestion would be we send it back to the faculty and staff and allow them to pass judgment on it and make suggestions. They might want to tweak it a little bit more. So that would be the procedure that I would envision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just say, again, in my previous life, it was different than the college. The commitment from the city to the stepping grade to retain employees was never a question, and not that it's a question with us, but even in the heart of the recession, that stepping grade was honored because you want to retain your employees. The variable is the amount to the base every year. And so I would like, if we do create language, I guess I would like it to be very, very clear that there's such financial difficulty, like low enrollment, whatever that may be, where we have to cut, you know, several million out of our budget. I see those as the kind of situations where we wouldn't continue to honor the step and column because that's what we're all here for. Why wouldn't that be our priority in budgeting? So I would just tell you that I'll work on some language, too. Maybe we can get together.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next tab item is a report on athletic conference impact by Al Williams and Chris Martin.
Chairman Howard, members of the board, President McLennan, thank you for allowing me to give a recap on athletics, like it's had over the years. Anyway, you got your board packet, information for the study of academics a couple of months ago, and now we get the financial impact of this as well. But I'm not here to walk through all the numbers. Basically, it's just a chance to review the decision that we made and, thank you. There we go. I'm used to having my touchscreen. I don't have that anymore. We call this the road to the N WAC. In 2014, we stood here and made a difficult decision to go to the N WAC, and we said we would do an evaluation of that decision now. And so after having a chance to have all of our teams transition to the N WAC, we can now have a chance to look at the numbers, academic success, and also the financial impact on the college. We made the decision primarily for financial reasons, but as we mentioned, we made this decision, it was more than just numbers we were talking about. It was the benefit for students, the benefit for students to have less time on the road, missing less class, and we were going to be able to recruit local athletes. That was the primary reason for making this decision. And as we determined in 2014, we had kind of hit a crossroads in our budget, and we had to make a decision one way or another, and that decision was to go to the N WAC for eight of our nine sports, with the rest remaining in the NJCAA. The reason we made that decision was to preserve existing NIC athletic programs, provide an opportunity for students because back then, we had a decision either to maintain the N WAC, the NJCAA for four sports, or to go to the N WAC and keep all of our sports. Part of that decision was to help us preserve our jobs, improve fiscal responsibility, create a model that's going to be sustainable as the economy changed, and provide generic opportunities for all of our student athletes. The numbers you got basically spoke for themselves, showing that we compared the numbers from 2014, when we were in the NJCAA, for all of our programs to where we are right now, 2017, with all of our team transitioning to the NJC, to the N WAC. And we showed in our numbers that the savings of dollar per dollar were $343,000 for the overall change, looking at dollar for dollar for the budget.
Can we ask a question, or do we want to wait till the end?
You can ask a question.
You can wait. That'd be great.
Okay. The programs that we looked at, again, looked at 2014, which had all of our programs in there. 2017, the current numbers within the last season, had all of our programs in there because, as you know, the programs from the outdoor sports switched over to 2014. The indoor sports just switched over last year, which is why we had to wait for that time to make a decision for the impact overall. The perceived cause of the N WAC, we made that determination, was that going to the N WAC would have a lack of diversity for our student enrollments, for our athletic programs. We would lose international student athletes. It was perceived to have a lack of competition, and there'll be lower attendance at the games. This review, after three years, shows that basically none of these have come to the point where it's going to be a point where it's going to be detrimental to our programs. We've maintained diversity. We do miss international students. That is something that has been difficult for us to continue because in the NJCAA, you could get athletes from all over the country, outside of the U.S., and you could give them full scholarships and tuition books and fees. We can't do that anymore, and in the N WAC, you can only get students from Canada. So we do miss that strong diversity, and that did add a lot to our student campus. Lack of competition, even though we've been one of the premier members of the league in all of our sports, we've not been overly dominant. We've won more than we've lost, of course, but we've not gone over there and run over there like people thought we would in a league that they perceived to be uncompetitive. That's not the case, but we are still the best team in that league. Lower attendance at games. I think this league has actually been a increase for regional attendance with competition from schools within a, basically a 400-mile radius for most of our programs. They do bring their fans over there with them. We've seen a lot of increase from areas like tri-cities. Our primary, farthest distance is going to be the Seattle area, Portland area, and teams still travel from there. But the good thing about it is that we're hitting our target market when we go out there on the road, when we have our teams playing against teams in this area. We primarily compete and recruit from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, and you see our vans going across the region to all of these areas. It's a major marketing thing for us in being in this league. So I think from that regard alone, outside the financial impact, these things that you can't put a monetary value on show the value of the change in our league. Again, looking at your numbers, the numbers you saw in 2017 that we showed, when we compared them to 2014, there have been major changes that show our numbers that would really have a more financial change and increased value if you looked at what it would cost us to remain in the NJCAA. There have been increases in scholarships for soccer. When we were in there in 2014, we were only giving scholarships for 20 student athletes per sport. Now the max for athletes for soccer is 24. Wrestling, that increased from 16 to 20, and also in the scenic West Athletic Conference we were in before, the soccer league was not available then. They now created a new soccer league. To have remained in that league would require at least another $15,000 for a program for them to travel and compete in the SWAC. So these changes don't show on your comparison when you saw $354,000 because if we would have filled those scholarships, it would have been approximately another $15,000 per program for the scholarships alone. Those are the numbers I just talked about there. Looking at just adding four per team, looking at the numbers at two local athletes, one woo-ee athlete, and one out-of-the-area athlete, it would cost about $15,000 for each team in additional revenue for those programs out of our grant aid. Same with the travel. With leagues now in Colorado, Southern Nevada for soccer, it would have been extremely costly for us to have our budget remain the same for travel for our soccer programs. So those numbers are not reflected in your programs. So we talked about the $354,000, comparing 2017 apples to apples, or what if it had been the NJCAA, we would have had a major difference of $90,000 in addition to what we showed for grant aid changes. That was the difference, $344,000 we talked about earlier. Again, a major portion of those numbers include the grant aid, I think back in 2014, $785,000 of that was grant aid dollars that the college provided for scholarships. That number now is down to about $340,000 that we give for student athletes in the N WAC because, as you know, in the N WAC, only 60% of the league allows you to provide scholarships, and at least everybody on the roster pays 35% tuition, and half of the roster is paying full tuition and fees. The financial impact of that alone, with students providing scholarship money, was $109,000, and that's a conservative estimate because in the N WAC, you're only recruiting local athletes. So we were actually paying more for out-of-the-area athletes for tuition and fees because they were from the out-of-the-area or international students. Our students, at a minimum, are providing $109,000, but I think because you don't record them if they don't recruit a scholarship, you don't really get the numbers that are paying straight out of pocket for walk-ons or for athletes that are not receiving scholarships in these numbers. Those numbers for grant aid I mentioned earlier, in 2014, $785,000 alone for grant aid for NJCAA programs in the N WAC. That does include wrestling in that number as well. It's still $340,000 for overall grant aid we provide, which is a $444,000 difference we're providing for student scholarships. Just to show the apples to apples that was given you in your packet, there was a 3% increase showing that the numbers would have been $858,000. Looking at the numbers with the increase for scholarships, not the increase for scholarships, but the increase in inflation would have been 3% higher, so $858,000 would have been what it cost for us for grant aid for this year. And then when you add on the additional scholarships, would have been for soccer, would have been $919,000, would have been what it would cost us for have scholarships for the NJCAA level for our programs. So that alone takes you almost to $600,000 you're saving in grant aid for student scholarships when we did this league switch from the NJCAA to the N WAC. Quick conclusion of that, we talked about the level of competitiveness, the professionalism. Even though we do miss the NJCAA, the competition level was different. The chance for national competition allowed us to recruit athletes of a higher caliber. We talk about the relative comparison of having to drop sports as opposed to competing in a regional conference and still being competitive. I think the decision spoke for itself that it was worthwhile for us to make that decision, and we're going to live with that. We're going to compete. We've still allowed our coaches to recruit, even though we don't give scholarships out of the area, they still attracted athletes out of the area who have bypassed scholarships to four-year schools and NJCAA schools because of the reputation we have here, the quality of education we have. So we have soaked them beyond just the national competition, but the chance to have a quality education here, still have a quality athletic experience here, and still be recruited by four-year schools. And because of that alone, we've still maintained our high level of excellence for athletics for being in the N WAC. Now we have questions.
Any questions? Kristi?
Sure. Thank you. Well, Al, I really appreciate the report. I had been kind of poking at it, like, where are we at? And so this is much more comprehensive. I appreciate that. And I would just tell you, I think that you've tried through all of this emotional issue, trying issue, to do a great job for NIC. You tried to steer the change, which I was opposed to, Todd was opposed to, but the rest of the board moved forward, and we have to respect that. But I do respect that, but I'm still going to come back to some of these points. It was hard tracking all those numbers, a lot of different numbers for different areas. And so what I'm gathering, the summary, the switch to the N WAC resulted in savings of $343,900. Would that be, that's what I have right here.
That was the actual budget to budget, and that included salaries and fringe benefits, which really skewed the process because you're going to have some natural changes from, we had some increases for some coaches. We added a few positions, so when you throw those, those changes would have happened regardless. And so when I pulled the number out to show what the change would have been pulling out the salaries and fringe benefits, the actual number was closer to $498,000.
Okay. So you went through some of the pros and, I don't know that the cons, that we would all agree on the cons. For me, the cons are, I guess, the lack of diversity is the very first thing, even though we're still getting some talented athletes, by all means, the lack of diversity, but also, I guess, that lack of opportunity at the national level and that overall marketing piece for NIC. So my question to Chris, actually, Chris, are you awake back there? So for $498,000, we made all these changes. What's that percentage to our budget overall?
It's not a very large number.
It's a very small number. And so, I mean, it was a major change, and we're there now, but I think we gave up quite a bit for a very small percentage to our budget. But I do admire Al and everything he's done to try to make the change as smooth as possible.
Well, like you mentioned, it was a difficult decision, but for sustainability, I think in the long run, there are other advantages of being in the N WAC. As a regional conference, it gives you a chance to... As a regional conference, it gives you a chance to expand sports. In the SWAC, we wouldn't have had the chance to bring back programs like baseball, for example, whereas now in the NWAAC, being a bus league, you can actually add baseball and you can have a chance for them to travel locally and doesn't cost you as much to try to travel down to Nevada or Salt Lake and those kind of places, also across country as well. So those kind of benefits, you kind of outweighed the actual dollar-for-dollar switch because we were never able to do that in the NJCAA and the cost would have continued to go up higher and higher in national travel with our continued success. I showed you in one of the graphs, the difference in regional travel for postseason play. Everything here is going to be either in Portland area or Seattle, but some of the comparisons where the league play was going to be in Florida or Texas or Kansas. There's a price for success and that's the reason why we got this predicament. We kept going to national tournaments and qualifying and they got to be more and more expensive.
Because you were good.
That was not going to change because we were always going to be good.
Yeah.
And the good thing about it is also your fans can go over and see the regional tournament, whereas in the past, it was tough to have your fans go down there to Florida and watch ballgames or even Texas and that or Kansas. And going over here for regional competition in Seattle, there were predetermined sites you could plan in advance, parents could go over there. And that was one of the bigger advantages of doing that as well, too. But one of the things I did talk about earlier is just the differences in missed class. We did a distinct or review of four programs from the number of days they lost in class in 2014 where they were losing class days in 2017. And we're talking 50 days of less travel and 45 days less for school that they're missing. And that's school for everybody, not just, those are actual travel days and class days that you're not missing anymore. So that benefit alone makes it easier on the students, not as much wearing and tearing their bodies for overnight travel. Same with the coaches as well, too. If they're faculty person, they're not missing class and having to pull an additional faculty to fill their spots. So some of these, some of these changes can't be measured financially, but all in all, it's a tough decision, but in the long picture, it's the right decision.
Mr. Chair? Todd?
Yeah, with the change in the scholarships and the grant aid and all the rest of that for the student athletes, I guess my question, I'm just curious, and you may not have a good feel for this, but I'm wondering, because we're not able to offer, say, a full scholarship, if you will, and we do have a portion that the student has to come up with and there's, for some, it's a significant portion for some, you know, a percentage. Are we seeing these student athletes fill that gap with just money out of their mom and dad's pocket or through academic slash foundation scholarships? Or how are our kids making up the difference because of, you know, the change in the scholarship structure?
Well, a lot of the recruiting model has changed. Now we actually need to seek out athletes that can qualify for financial aid or have parents that can help pay their fees. And we've reached out to the foundation more and more for scholarships and that's been intervals we've had to take. It is more of a burden on the students, but and for that reason alone, some of them are taking less classes, too. So in that regard, it takes them a little longer to graduate. So there are some drawbacks of having to them pay their own money out of pocket and that's what, good example of that as well. And then also not being able to provide room and board for these students.
Right.
A lot of pocket for that as well, too. The boost clubber in the past could help them. So those alone are a major detriment to the athletes we can get that outside of this area. So we do lose out on students that can't qualify for financial aid and some of them, again, take longer to graduate here because of that reason. So the room and board has been one of the biggest things that's been hard for us to sell students to come here when they have to pay out of pocket for that and it's a trade-off for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Al, one of the things that impressed me about your report was also the comparison of travel days and school days that were expended by the different athletes under the two different programs, the NJCAA and the NWAAC. And I'm reminding myself all the time that we're here to educate people. That's what this is all about, really. But we want them to have a college experience, too. And we want, we want that to be a nice full experience and that includes athletics. And you've reported to us that we've still got a good level of competitiveness and maybe we can get more students into athletic programs if we can get baseball back. And we've saved a half a million dollars almost. And as I look at the days for the softball, for instance, missed school days at the NJCAA was 23. Under the NWAAC, it was five.
Yeah.
So that these students had more of an opportunity to be in class. And that was almost across the board. Men's basketball, the missed school days was 18. Now it's down to 11. Volleyball, it was 14 and a half and now it's down to zero. So we're providing an opportunity for these students to have an athletic experience and bring that experience to NIC and then making sure that they have more time in the classroom, which is, I think, a real valuable asset, asset to what we did when we changed conferences. So thank you for the report. It helps us understand what, what's happening.
Any other comments?
Yes, I just want to add one other maybe unexpected impact and I want to also add my appreciation for Al and the way he's carried himself throughout this. I wasn't here for the debate. Not sorry I missed that. And Al wouldn't say this, but I wouldn't say that NIC was warmly welcomed into the NWAAC. I think that would be an understatement. And, and he's done, done this with, with grace and staying on the high road to make sure that North Idaho College is represented as a professional institution that cares deeply about its athletes. And so I just admire him for the way that he's done that and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. I even have my NWAAC shirt on. That was hard, that was hard to put on for a couple of weeks.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Al, thank you very much for the report. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the board chair report. The, the good thing about the board chair report is it's short and it's neck to the last agenda item, so. I do want to report on this meeting we had down at Idaho Falls with the new community college. I reported to you last time that, that the technical college down there had now gotten, achieved the status of community college, had like a 70% vote to bring it in. And the people in that area are so excited about it. Apparently another county has already got on the, on the, the next election, Bingham County is thinking about being a taxing county to, to the county where the college is. So it's, they're pretty excited about it down there. Our visit down there was an offer by the other three community colleges to bring your boards down and talk to the new board at Eastern Idaho College. As the president referenced, a lot of times you go to teach and you learn, that's true. I don't know that we taught them a whole lot. We learned a lot. There were a lot of comments, a lot of discussions, but I'll tell you what was really achieved was bringing them into the community college family. And that's an important thing in this state. The community colleges, as we've reported on a number of occasions, have a reputation with legislators, with the executive branch, all around as being fairly well organized, cooperative, trying to achieve a success jointly, not competing with each other. And when there are competitive issues and, and questions, problems, we address those problems and we come up with the answers so that somebody else doesn't have to do it. Well, Eastern Idaho College is going to be really helpful for a number of reasons. Number one, they've got several very important legislators that are on JFAC and other committees in the legislature that are in that district and are, are very supportive of that school. So they bring another dimension to the collection of community colleges here in Idaho and, we'll find, I think, that they're going to be pretty good contributors to our mutual By the way, I had a good dinner down there, too. That was really. The convocation that I was only able to attend part of it was a pretty exciting thing. And I'm going to ask Brad, actually. Brad was able to stay through the whole thing. Could you just kind of maybe give us a few of your thoughts on that?
First of all, I'd say you should have stayed. It was an excellent meeting. I just, visioning is a, something I think will pull everybody together, getting everybody on, on the same page at the same time and really setting the roadmap for where we want to go. I thought Jason did a great job facilitating and starting the discussion, really talking about Sony and then NASA. But Sony, what was interesting, it was, wasn't about the products Sony was going to produce. It was more about bringing value to made in Japan and what they could do as a, an organization to, to raise the level. And just setting the stage that way. And then the NASA example really was when we're going to put a man on the moon, it takes everybody. So the custodian knew what the mission was and the mission was simple, we're going to put a man on the moon. And it was partly his job as well. So setting that as the stage for this, I really thought it, it helps, at least for me, to say, okay, where are we going? What's our shared purpose here? What's embedded into NIC so that everybody understands? And again, tonight I came up the stairs. Now, if I've missed this for a year, but I saw a new missions, the mission statement on the wall in print, I thought, I haven't seen that before, have I? But having those reminders of what the mission is and having everybody onboard, the board included, of why a decision's made, it's part of that comprehensive plan that we all know about and it's, it's all together, not all for one. It's all, it's for the whole organization, not just for me. So the way he did that and worked roundtable in a large group, how do you get consensus in a large group? You break it really down into small bits and pieces and he's able to do that. I'm sure that you have a lot of notes to review and, and put together, but then accompanying with the strength, weakness, opportunity, threat activity, the end result will be action's going to be taken and failure's not an option. So it was really good. Well done.
Thank you for that. The other thing I want to report on is, you know, Art on the Green occurred here two weeks ago. You know, we, we don't think of it this way, but that's our opportunity to be part of the community. The community comes and experiences NIC. They walk around the grounds, they see what we have here, they, they identify with North Idaho College. It's one of those great connections that we have with the community and, and it's a fun thing to do, obviously, but there is a purpose for it in terms of NIC's reputation in the community as, as being one of the leaders and one of the, one of the standout attractions of our, of our community. So another successful Art on the Green. And talk about successful, I guess I want to say, we have now signed our agreement with University of Idaho and Lewis Clark with regard to the joint use facility and we're, we're all, that's all wrapped up now. And I want to comment on the fact that the Association Community College trustees is meeting September 25th through the 28th. And Todd and Brad, I think, are going. I don't know if that's, is that Cody, Wyoming? Is that where you're going? Where is it?
Rock Springs.
Oh, Rock Springs, yeah.
I'll be, I'll be joining them as well.
Oh, you're going also, okay. So that must be Las Vegas, then. But that's all the comments I have in terms of the president's report. And are there any remarks for the good of the order? Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the things we should do, certainly I want to do because I was not able to attend the community college gathering in Idaho Falls, was thank Ken. You drove down one day, you represented us all. Geography is not our friend in this case where the other community colleges did have more members there. I happened to be in the area a week or so later and the report was very positive about NIC made it. They could tell that was a real effort to, Ken, you represented us well. And the feeling, as you described, was clearly one, I talked to some other board members in Twin Falls and the community college president in College Southern Idaho said they felt it was a really worthwhile meeting. So thank you for the time and chase it took to get there. I do happen to know Park Price, who's the new board chair. He's been a longtime advocate of education. He's part of that Idaho Business for Education that, that is another ally in making this happen. And my, I don't know the other board members, but I heard that there was a good feeling about those board members who are really excited about and interested in being part of the board. Are they appointed on a temporary basis then to progress through the election process, as I recall?
They're staggered, there'll be staggered elections.
Most board members are staggered by the time you get done with it. I would also highlight, and I had confirmed while I was in Southern Idaho a week or so ago, that the two co-chairs of JFAC, both John Kiel, we knew, I was retiring, as is Maxine Bell, the other co-chair. And so I think it's fortunate because Maxine has always been a champion of community colleges as, as, as has been shown, that those gals are still helping set the budget for this next year. And now we'll have a combination of community colleges to continue that championing of the value of community colleges, which we all obviously know and believe is, is just great. So thank you, Mr. Richard Chair. And I think, Rick, you got to get the go-to. Didn't you also go to Southern Idaho in the summer? There's something wrong with that, but it worked out all right.
I had a really good mill also.
Judy, when do they nominate their leadership for JFAC?
There's great suggestion about that amongst the folks I visited with. And this was both at Southern Idaho and then in the Boise area. It's not real clear yet. There are some folks that I, and some legislators who have begun to identify. Some of the members of Task Force in Higher Education would be some folks who, you know, really getting a sense of, of the efforts at higher education and those folks may then move in that position. It's so political that we'll just have to wait and see, but there's nothing wrong with, as you say, paying attention and if there's a chance to advocate, that's part of what our role can be as board members.
Todd?
I just wanted to dovetail on a couple of comments made earlier. It's a little late for a clean segue, but the new military facility downstairs for our veterans is significant upgrade and improvement. And I just speak as a vet and a supporter of that group and I know Carl and the rest of the guys are just really pleased and excited. Several of us were able to attend a barbecue last Thursday on the 17th as kind of a christening of the new facility, getting the little nickel tour. And we had a lot of people there. We had the folks from LCSC and U of I, we had the American Legion was there, the VFW was there. We had, we have a little contingent here that does some military science classes and some physical fitness and they were represented and there were some other folks there. And it was a, it was a nice little event and it was well-attended and I think a very positive step in our support of our military. So I just want to thank the college for doing that and getting it done. And it was one of the first projects that came as part of this transition with the new, you know, joint use facility and with our new wellness center. So appreciate the priority there and getting that done. It was a lot of smiling faces and pleased, a lot of people pleased, so.
Should be.
It's great.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank whoever provided us with this and the catalog. And if anybody isn't using their catalog, I have two people I'm trying to get into college, so I'll take their catalog.
Judy?
One last thought. As you mentioned, the Art on the Green, I think we have on the list of things to think about. What we charge for use of our facilities, isn't that in the thinking, exploring stages? I continue to have input from the public about how do we balance what the taxpayers have all helped provide, a community college, with the cost to provide the services to someone who uses the community college? And I know it's been a couple of years since we looked at it and I think you, President McLennan, said you had some ideas on that. I don't want that to fall off the agenda, so I'll wait for you this fall to tell me when it fits, but I would ask that we have an update on that.
Okay. Yeah, like, yes.
And I appreciate the comments about the convocation and the visioning process and really everybody's engagement in that. One of the most powerful things was when our facilitator asked all the tables, if you hear something that was a priority at your table from another group that's reporting out, to just raise your hands. And the very first report, nearly every hand in the, in the, in the, in the every hand in the, in the, in the, in the room went up. And that was so visual and symbolic of how much we really do have in common. And we just need to figure out how to, how to, how to come to that. The other thing is, for those of you who were not able to attend, we are, it was videoed. And we certainly don't want you to watch the hour and 10-minute long video of people discussing at tables. But we do want to, we do, we do have the entry and the, and the comments that were made about the process along the way. And I think you find that interesting. And we'll make sure that we push that out. And it'll go out to the whole campus as well for people who weren't able to participate. But I'd encourage you to take a look at that.
Any other comments? No further comments. We are adjourned.